Called by Alderman and President, thank you all for being here tonight. At this time, I would like to recognize Pastor Brooks, who will listen prayer, and then Mr. Powell, who will lead us in the place of leading. So please thank you.
Let us all bow, please. Dear Lord in heaven, we come once again with a vow here in our heart, first to say thank you. Then Father, we just want to acknowledge you as we proceed in these meetings on tonight. And we ask that your presence be fair as we acknowledge you as our Lord and Savior. Father, we ask blessing upon the city and all of its members that make it all possible to be a city. We thank you for this mayor and this board of aldermen. We thank you for the businesses and the residents that live here, that this city will be our city of love, peace, joy, and happiness. And Father, as we end this season of giving, we just thank you for Jesus. And we just pray over him, Father, that we that are able to give, that we will give toward those that stand on the knee. And Father, that you will receive all the glory and all the honor from our stewardship. We just thank you this evening, Father, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you both for that. At this time, we'll go to item number three eight, Chief Slayton.
Good evening. Chief Al could be here tonight, but he wanted to formally recognize the dispatch supervisor, Kristen Baker, just warming up here right now. Oh, he wanted to formally recognize her for community outreach initiative that she kind of pushed forward, made happen. Um, the blessing box, those put up in PD, and it got advertised, people could drop stuff off, and if people needed it, they could just come by and get it. We've had like a surprising amount of folks take advantage of it, so much so that it's eaten it up. Did a little news piece on it, and it blew up even more after that. Um, so he just wanted to formally recognize that with a certificate of appreciation. He wanted to work to her and to congratulate her on a good initiative that was getting more involved with people in the community with police department.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, so we have a resolution to present Ms. Baker. And I won't read the entire thing, but it recognizes her ongoing stewardship of the blessing box, including coordinating the donations, encouraging public participation, and ensuring the resources are all stocked. Been a wonderful thing. It demonstrates your dedication to not only the city and not only the police department, but the community as a whole. And so we wanted to present this to you. Is there a motion then to adopt the resolution to recognize dispatch supervisor Kristen Baker?
Motion.
All right, Ms. Bates made the motion. Mr. Powell, did you second? That's all. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much for that.
Yes, sir.
You want to get some pictures of them?
Yeah.
Chief Al will face with person. I'll try to, I'll try to help him out, because I know he's going to be like, you just take it.
All right, items three A, I'm sorry, three B and three C are FYI matters, just so everyone out there who might be listening, Christmas parade in the Jingle Market this Saturday, December thirteenth. The Christmas parade starts at nine AM.
Nine AM with the Jingle Market.
Okay, hope everybody will come out, and Mr. Williams promises to wear a Christmas sweater for the Christmas.
I got my things.
Item three C, the mayor's youth council is conducting a winter coat drive until January the fifth. If you're like me, you have several winter coats that you haven't worn in several winters, so please bring them and donate them if you feel moved to do so. Anything else on those matters?
Yes.
All right, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with two amendments to it. First, a request to approve the registration for the mid-winter conference, MML conference, January thirteenth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, for our aldermen who wish to attend. And second, travel and training for two of our police officers who wish to attend um, a training class. The total cost of the training class for both would be seven hundred and ninety dollars, and that is for the forty-hour dispatcher certification class, December fifteenth through the nineteenth. Um, so with those two amendments, is there a motion to approve the consent? Motion? Taylor made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconded it. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The monthly budget reports and bank reconciliation are FYI matters. Are there any questions about that? Item six A, request to discuss the current sign ordinance. Ms. Johnson, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Morrison and our board of aldermen. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you guys. Um, I own Bloom World Company. We opened in February. The local florist can gift shop across from Calaway, down to station. Um, we are just had a wonderful, you know, beginning of our first year. Um, in October, a gentleman came to us from the city and indicated to us that our open sign, um, that we put up one tall board sign approximately two and a half by three and a half feet, um, violated the current sign ordinance for the city. Um, well, actually, that actually meant Mayor Morrison actually shared that with me. When he, when he first came, he told me that I had taken my open sign and my pots out front because it brought too much attention to my small business, which it was a little confusing, but I, I really didn't know what to say. But I did reach out to Mayor Morrison, um, for clarification and for help, because it didn't make a lot of sense to me, and he indicated that my pots were fine. Um, I had the pots custom fabricated to match the facade of the building. Um, and they have very nice tub earrings in them from a neighboring business. Um, so, you know, that, that was, he indicated that was fine, but that my open sign did violate the sign ordinance. I was like, okay, well, I took my sign in as requested. Um, and but then, as always, we deliver all over the city, so I'm driving a lot. Um, I noticed that there were other businesses too, all right, that have these, what I call a wayfinder sign. Because as a small retail business, you know, I want to let people know we are open for business, okay? My building is brand new, it's beautiful, we have tinted windows, which are necessary because I get the evening sun, and I can assure you that my, my store is like furnace in the summertime. And that's even with the tinted windows, but those do prevent you being able to see our lights on from, from the street level. Um, we have lots of people that tell us all the time, oh, I don't know if you're open or not. So if I don't have my open sign out, you know, a lot of times people, you know, won't stop. Um, but as I drove around, I noticed how many other businesses utilize these signs, you know, for many years, or, or promoting sales. And, um, you know, if it were, um, you know, hazard in some way, or offensive in some way, or inappropriate, you know, I could definitely see that. Well, um, I said, well, we'll just see what happens, because I thought, well, surely, if he has come to me, he will go to the other businesses as well, because if this is that big of an issue, they would have to bring their signs in as well. So I waited about a week, and I noticed that no one else had brought theirs in. So I felt that was a lot. So I'll be honest, I put my sign back out. Um, and, uh, you know, it stayed out. Well, he has revisited me, I think it was about two weeks ago, to tell me again that my sign was, um, violating the sign ordinance. But at the same time, no one else's signs were coming in. So I, I, I waited about a week again to see if there were, there was further action taken, um, with businesses, you know, very near me on the same street that I'm on, and their signs were still allowed to be out. So that, that was very confusing to me as a business owner, because, you know, your first, or my first thought was, well, okay, has someone complained about my sign for some reason? Or, you know, is, does this, you know, person of the city have a personal problem with my open sign, which I don't think is, either is the case. Um, when he was visiting with me the second time, because I had had some time to, you know, think about the situation, and Mayor Morrison was kind enough to send the ordinance to me, so I'd actually had time to read what was in the ordinance itself. Um, I did discuss with, um, the building inspector, my thoughts on the matter. Um, and when I, we, you know, I got to the part where we're discussing, you know, other businesses utilizing these signs, his recommendation was that I can, that I submit a formal complaint because these other businesses have similar signs. Well, you know, Buckstat is a fairly densely populated area, but we are a small town. You know, I see many of the same people all the time. I know many of the other business owners, because since we've been here in February, I've met them, you know, I've patronized their businesses. So it didn't make a lot of sense to me why he would recommend that I file a complaint and potentially cause harm to a fellow small business owner because he was not enforcing this ordinance in a fair manner. I, I did not like that as a business owner, um, because I certainly wouldn't want, you know, making that recommendation to someone else and them complaining about me. So I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't really love that, um, to be honest with you, because I, you know, I don't want to do anything else to hurt another business owner, because I don't have a problem with their signs, because I understand why they're there. We all have overheads needs, and we all need every customer that walks to the door. So, you know, I would not want to stop anyone from hiding business in any shape or fashion. Um, but, you know, he and I talked about it, and, um, I did bring my sign in again for a week, see if there were any other signs that were removed, and there were not. Um, I did, so I, I know he did visit one other, um, business location, because they posted about it on Facebook, which that's, that was the only confirmation that I have, which, um, you know, I don't necessarily agree with that, because, you know, there's a place for everything. I don't think Facebook is the place that you handle matters like that, but I understood that he had been hurt as well. But yet, the other larger businesses that had them still had not been asked to remove theirs. But if you look on page ten of the sign ordinance, which I'm sure you guys have, and you look at the definition of portable sign, these signs really do not fit that definition. Now, is it portable? Absolutely it is. I can pick it up, and I can take it into my building. But if you look at the definition of portable sign in the ordinance itself, it's a sign with wheels that is designed to be transported from one location to another. And if you take that definition, none of these signs fall into that definition. So, you know, I've, and, and I had already come to the conclusion that it, it really is going to be, the interpretation lies with the person reading it. But now, in this case, it's the man who's enforcing it. So, you know, yeah, that, that lends a little more weight than just my own opinion, which is why it's up to you. Because, you know, rather than complaining about a neighboring business, I would much rather, let's come up with a solution. It makes more sense to me that either there be some clarification in the language for the ordinance, um, or, you know, maybe some type of adjustment. Because, you know, any of you, I don't know if any of the rest of you are small business owners, but if you are, you, I'm pretty sure have an appreciation for every person that does business with you, and you want them to come back, uh, just like I do. So I guess my first question, so now that you know the backstory, is number one, do these signs even really fall into a portable sign, into that portable sign definition? Because as it reads on page ten, it doesn't to me. But now, you, you know, I'm not an attorney, so, I mean, it may be that your legal counsel said, yes, it indeed, you know, indeed does. And if it does fall into that definition, is there anything that we can do about that so that small businesses like mine, like the other businesses that I see with these signs, can, you know, put these to use to draw customers into their businesses?
Okay, so, um, thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, of course.
You came, came because I asked you to come, and I'm glad you did. You're not the first person to complain. I put that in quotes.
Yeah, well, I look for solutions.
Not only reason to complain, but complaining, my word, not yours, about the sign ordinance. And, and there is some interpretation that's necessary. Um, I'm a lawyer, and I don't think that the portable sign definition here would, would meet what your sign was. And just so you guys know, what Ms. Johnson's sign is, is one of these little teepee looking signs, you know, that stands like this in front of her building that she's got chalk written on. So, you know, it's, it's a tastefully done sign, and I understand the reason that she needs the sign, because she's right. If her door is closed, given the tent, uh, in front of her building, if you drove or walked by, you would not know if her lights are on or not. And she said, a lot of times, people will go by because they don't know that the business is open, but putting that little sign out front signals to people that it's open. So it seems to me that we've got, uh, uh, several issues here. The first one is, I don't see that your sign is a sign constructed on a trailer with wheels. Okay, that's the first thing. Now, I'm no expert in the ordinance, I haven't read it all, uh, but I'll tell you that we will look at it and determine whether or not your sign falls into any of the categories. Mike, do you know if her sign falls into any of the categories?
Um, in my, in my, in my twenty-five years of enforcing the sign ordinance, this has always been considered a portable type sign. If it's not a portable type sign, it has to be considered some type of sign, and it's certainly not a legal sign if it's not allowed by the ordinance.
Okay, so if, if it in fact violates the ordinance, okay, which sounds like there's some chance that it does.
Sure.
Then this body needs to evaluate the ordinance and determine whether or not it wants to exempt from prohibited signs, that type of sign. Now, I will tell you that you're not the only one who's complaining. For instance, I was at another building, not, another business, not long ago, and they had these little, what do they call them, these like ribbon signs or whatever?
Like the little air, the air thing?
You stick it in the ground, you know, and it's like a pin that flies around, you know?
Yes, sir.
And they were complaining to me that that sign's illegal, that it is an illegal sign, and I know that sign's an illegal sign, okay? So at some point in time, the board needs to reconsider this ordinance and determine if it is good like you guys want it, or if we want to make some exemptions to it. And I don't get a vote, but I will tell you, there's nothing distasteful about your sign.
Yes.
And, and I, if I got a vote, I would say that we ought to exempt your type of sign.
Well, I, I understand the purpose of these ordinances, because you want to maintain a certain level of respectful decorum, you know, through the city. And, and I agree with you a hundred percent. If somebody had a tacky sign, I would be upset.
And tacky signs in the eye of the beholder.
That, now that's true.
And I don't think tacky signs, you know, define in that ordinance.
It's not, but I've been, right.
So here's, here's what I think we'll do, and I'll ask the board to do. We need to go back and look at this and determine if we want to make some tweaks or some changes to the sign ordinance. When the sign ordinance was adopted, I know that it upset a lot of people, including someone who may or may not sit on this board.
Took my side, man.
So it's something that we need to address, and that's why I wanted you guys, I invited the other gentleman with the other sign, I talked about to come as well, but he chose not to come. We will look at it, and before the next meeting, have more clarity on the board.
That's all I can ask, and I, and I appreciate that so much, and I appreciate your time doing that. Um, you know, and if you determine that my sign violates, I will gladly take it in as long as the ordinance is enforced across the board. Um, small businesses like mine, where, where you will find me every single day, or bigger businesses that you might or might not see that owner there, or owners of businesses that, you know, have, you know, multiple businesses in Buckstat that, that utilize these signs. You know, I expect those signs to be taken in as well, if they indeed, if, if the board determines that they are in violation.
Now, Ms. Johnson, what we cannot do is force you to take your sign. What we can do is fine you if you don't.
Correct. I'm aware.
Understanding we can't ride around and snatch folks' signs off the street.
Oh, I know.
But the point is, is we're going to review this.
Yes.
And we're going to enforce it according to it, okay? So thank you for coming tonight.
I appreciate your time.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
All right. Any questions or comments at all before we move on to something else?
Can I ask that she send me a picture of the sign for a start?
Yeah, would you send a picture, you send just with your phone snatched?
I will.
Mayor, could I address the enforcement issue?
Yes, sir.
Just a little bit. Uh, and, uh, she, she's correct, and we, at this point in time, you know, in the building department, um, the, the, the method we use on enforcement is, if we go out and we inspect a certain area, like, like a shopping center, and we see, uh, illegal signs out, we address those. Uh, because of, you know, personnel shortages and, you know, time and so on and so forth, uh, that's, that's basically how we've been enforcing the sign ordinance, you know? I went to your shopping center last week, I hit everybody in there to take these particular signs down. But, uh, I understand there's, there are some up, and, you know, you can, you know, we've got a great chief of police, but he don't catch all the speeders going up and down Buckstat Road, and, and, and so, um, we, we, we do the best we can with enforcement on these signs. And, um, I, I promise you, I don't have anything against Elizabeth in any kind of way, I just, uh, I was trying to be as nice as I could to her while I'm trying to enforce the ordinance, and then, like I say, it's just, uh, we didn't threaten the right tickets or anything like that, you know, we just, because it's just not appropriate. We try to, try to be fair with all our business owners if we can.
Okay, just, Mayor, if I'm, if I may, just, uh, on, it's on page twenty-one of the ordinance, it's section ten under prohibited signs, it's, uh, number paragraph five, it's, uh, prohibited signs.
Page twenty-one.
Page twenty-one, uh, number page twenty-one of that. Prohibited signs are signs which are not securely affixed to the ground or otherwise fixed in a permanent manner to an approved supporting structure, including but not limited to portable sign.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm fine with, if the board wants to allow these types of signs, or if y'all want to have some kind of temporary permit for it, uh, you know, whatever, whatever y'all thinks.
Let's, let's go, let's go to the definition. Prohibited signs, which, which one?
It's number paragraph five.
Paragraph five, signs which are not securely fixed to the ground or otherwise affixed in a permanent manner. Okay, so that's your sign.
Correct, but it also says portable sign.
It says, it says, including but not limited to.
And I, and I understand that too, so that's, that's interpretation, but if you go back to the definition of portable sign, it, it is these, that these, you know, types of
That, that sign is prohibited by that section. No, there's no doubt about that. The question ultimately for the board is going to be whether or not we want them in that ordinance, okay? It says signs which are not securely fixed to the ground, that's your sign, okay? Whether or not it ought to be outlawed or not is the other issue.
Sure.
But it's outlawed by this ordinance. I, I want to make sure that we're clear about that. Mr. Williams?
Is it possible, since it is retail season, to, uh, do a temporary release of that ordinance for, now until January first? Just because it's retail and it's heavy summer season, is that possible?
Well, it's possible, it's possible for our, for us not to enforce ordinances. Uh, in fact, it's not been that long ago that somebody came here, and we basically said we weren't going to enforce parking lot ordinance. So that is really, um, not a good habit to get into. Mr. Giddy, I know you support that, and Mr. Campbell alluded to that when we talked about that issue. We really do not want to get in the business of being arbitrary or capricious as to how we enforce our rules. That is bad business when you're talking about city and other government. We, we need to, we need to look at this ordinance, though, okay? And we need to decide as a policy body by the next meeting what we want to do. And then, um, I'll, I'm in charge, I guess, of enforcing the ordinances along with Mr. McCullough, and Mr. McCullough, and I will talk about it after the meeting, okay? You good? All right, thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
I want to say, I appreciate your generosity, but I agree with you completely on what you're saying. So, I mean, and, and, and handling that, thank you, I appreciate the fault and, 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 you know, the fault in this of that, but I also agree with you, Mr. Morrison, all of your faults in that matter, so I appreciate that. So, thank you so much.
So what y'all, what I've asked you all to do is to look through this ordinance, and if you guys see, or if you have some issues, if you have some things that you want to tweak, let's try to get that to Mr. Giddy well before the next meeting. And if we decide that, you know, we just don't like this, these signs, because signs are not affixed to the ground encompasses so many things, including these tasteful signs, we may want to just amend that. So let's think about it, try to fix it if you guys are in agreement with that, okay? Uh, item six B, consideration of opting out of the Safe Solicitation Act. Um, legislature passed the Safe Solicitation Act, and I think you've all probably read it and otherwise understand it. We have put a proposed resolution allowing the city to opt out of it for now, I think for good reason. Opting out of it now does not prohibit us from adopting an ordinance that would mirror the statute. But if we don't opt out, we're stuck with the state statute and all of the enforcement and permitting requirements and things. And I told, I think I told Ms. Campbell today, the only solicitor that I have seen in the city of Buckstat was the chief. When he and the fire chief were standing in the intersection one Saturday morning asking voters for money for, you know, a fundraiser for something, I don't think we have a problem with solicitation in the city. I might be naive to that fact, I don't think we have a problem. I think we ought to opt out, reserving the right as a body to adopt an ordinance down the road, even next month, if you guys feel like we ought to adopt something. But, um, if we miss our opportunity to opt out of the statute, then we missed it forever. So questions or comments about that?
Mayor, just so everybody's aware, today would be the last, this meeting is the last meeting before the cutoff of the opt-out date, so, um, if this, if it's not opted out today, by January one, it takes effect. No longer people to opt out.
Mayor, I did want to mention that Ridgeland did something similar. They opted out, and then they passed their own ordinance more strictly regulating this type of issue. Uh, so we do have, you know, sample ordinance that we could look at for January.
Okay, um, any questions? Mr. Williams, do you have?
Do we need to opt out?
Well, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to ask, there's a resolution before you, no, thank you, Pastor, there's a resolution before you opting out. Is there a motion then to adopt the resolution opting out? Mr. Taylor made the motion, is there a second? Ms. Williams? I'm sorry. Seconded.
Yes, he is.
All in favor? Any opposed? It was the sweater that confused. Campbell, it was the sweater that confused me, I'm sorry. Okay, um, item seven, discussion reconsideration of denial of the free, for, and industrial exemptions. As I recall, we talked last time about this issue, and there were two companies who had been denied an exemption.
Four. There's four.
Four, and those, uh...
Samuel, Castenall, Westlake, and the four.
Well, the two showed up. Okay, and they can reapply, when can each of them reapply?
So because they were denied, uh, we sent out letters last March, asking all of those corporations to come to us by April first, uh, and apply with the city. They were previously granted by the county, but now that the city is incorporated, they have to file with us, uh, so they would be able to reapply in April. We could send out another round of letters if the board wishes.
Okay, so in terms of what we did the last time, that's where we are, we did that.
Yes, they can't change the tax rule at this point. Um, Zach can probably speak more to that, but they would have to reapply for the next tax rule.
And, and tonight, we don't have a current application before the board.
We do not.
Okay, so we can undo what we did, even if we wanted to, the tax rules are set as the tax rules are, but... But now's a good time to further discuss it, or you can wait before an application comes before you all to determine whether you want to grant it or deny it. Mr. Deason, are you here to talk about that tonight?
I can be.
Well, is that why you can?
It is.
Okay. I don't want to pass over you. I don't want to pass over you if you want to reiterate what you said last time.
Mayor, Board, thank you, thank you for what you do. You don't get enough praise because it's a big job. People don't realize, you gotta have thick skin and you gotta make some hard decisions. And I don't think this actually should be one of those implied because, look, what you want to do, you want to take care of your existing businesses, okay? You also want to take care of those businesses that you're trying to encourage to come into your community. You're very fortunate. Ridgeland, the city of Madison, they don't have large industrial bases because of your infancy and the way that you grew with Nissan and suppliers. You guys have that opportunity. If you go and look at tax on inventory, we're one of nine states in the U.S. that tax inventory. There's another forty-one that don't. And the inventory that we're talking about here tonight is not your parts and pieces and widgets and gadgets. It's when you put them all together and you ship them out of state. That's it. That's what we're talking about, this free port exemption. So, you know, I'm sure Zach and John have looked at the law and what you can and can't do, uh, you know, and we can explain if that's the wishes of this board. They need to make another application next year, and that it will be reconsidered at that point.
Yeah, certainly advise them that they need to make an application. And we've written them and told them that they can do that and they need to do that. And I suspect that, you know, when they do make an application, this issue will be brought back up and we'll discuss it further. Not to say we can't discuss it now.
Well, and keep in mind, without disclosing too much, there are at least two companies that are looking to currently make Buckstadt their home, okay? And I don't want to be put in a position of telling them, "Well, no, you're gonna have to pay taxes on that." When over in, and I'm making this up because I don't remember the nine, Louisiana, you don't have to. We're over in Alabama. So, we're competing against other states that don't tax finished goods. They really don't even tax inventory, but, uh, that's just the nature of these here in the state of Mississippi at the moment.
Okay.
So, that's just information.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments about the issue now?
With those, this is, you want to stick with us?
At the appropriate time. Don't be looking around the city today and tomorrow because you might see some visitors.
In other words, we do have some people here that are, this is their multiple visit, and they're considering locations not only in Buckstadt, but Madison County and other states. And it's a hundred million dollar project. So, they take all those things into consideration as well. And Zach, I'll ask you, do you need me for anything else? Are you good?
I think, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
Now, I just want to confirm something real quick so we can have it out in front of everybody right here, right here, right now. Um, I keep being told that, you know, these people don't pay their fair share, shall we use? Now, that being said, I mean, they pay ad lorm, just like everybody else in C. Buckstadt does, right?
That's correct.
They pay every tax, just like everybody else in C. Buckstadt does.
That's correct.
They're bringing in workers who are spending tax dollars in Buckstadt.
That's correct.
So, the only thing that they're, we're doing is making them pay a free port tax at this point on product that be shipped. Uh, maybe if I still had my bike shop and we had a product sitting right there that, you know, we wouldn't pay on. So, that's the thing, the difference that we're looking at, that they, that they, um, we're asking them not to pay, that everybody else pays.
Yeah, it's no different than a household. The only difference is today, you're making them pay taxes on their inventory.
Right.
And the only thing that they're asking for, which has been granted in the past already by the county, is a free port exemption on the finished goods that are shipped out of state.
Well, these four exempt at one time, and then they not filed?
Yes.
Correctly during time?
So, they've always...
No, the county, uh, previously did.
Because they were pre-stated with the county.
Their county.
There are members of the previous board that pursued the free port.
The free port exemption was, there was no expiration date.
A lot, a lot of communities do it in perpetuity because the law actual, it actually allows you to grant a free port warehouse in perpetuity.
Correct.
Council. So, that's how a lot of communities don't have to look at these applications every single year and make the decisions.
I mean, you go down and see Waltham, I mean, yeah, Waltham Michelle and Jonathan McMillan bend their arm to a little bit and tell them, "Get this thing off the books. Don't put us in a bad position."
Do you want to make any other comments?
Yes, it's, sorry. This is McKenna's lead. It's, it's really exempting a tax that other taxpayers don't pay. It's limited to big warehouses, distribution facilities, and manufacturers. And that's it. So, it's not giving really an exemption to these companies that other people are paying the tax on. Other people don't owe this tax because they don't have, you know, if they're not running a big warehouse logistics facility or making something in Mississippi and shipping it out of state, they don't ever owe this tax.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
I've got one question. I'm from Hunter Engineering.
Oh, good question.
I'm Shad, sorry, shipping from Hunter Engineering. As far as the application, when can we reapply? April or can we do it now?
You can go ahead and find out if you'd like.
Apply early because the inventory movement report is due April one.
Yeah, so, and also the tax assessor's office wants us to get everything solidified by no later than June in order to get their tax rules proper. So, you go ahead and submit tomorrow if you'd like.
All right. Do y'all know anything about Hunter Engineering?
Yep.
Well, we make tire balance equipment, alignment equipment, but we ship all over the world. Every country in the world, just about, we sell our equipment in. And most of it's built right here in Mississippi. We got a plant in Durant, and we have a plant right in, in our D.C. city of Buckstadt.
And, you know, as mentioned last time, Raymond and Durant provide a free port warehouse exemption. And that's two of the reasons they're located in those communities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all you guys for being here.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. And this is a pay. And this is a pay.
No, I will. I can't. All right. Let's go to item seven B. And that is amendments to the fireworks ordinance. You have the ordinance before you passed by the last board on a vote of four to one. We had a discussion last meeting about whether we wanted to amend the fireworks ordinance or not. And if it's the will of the board that we want to amend the fireworks ordinance, need to give Mr. Giddy some direction. Zach, do you have particular questions that you wanted to ask them?
So, I've talked to Alderman Powell and I've talked to Alderman Williams, and they've both, you know, had some suggestions and some things that they would like, you know, considered in the ordinance. Um, one namely whether or not you want these, the sale to be out of a brick and mortar business, um, or if you want them limited to certain zones within the zoning ordinance. Um, if you want them to be, you know, if you want them to be able to be sold in tents, that's certainly fine. I just, there's some things that I think we just need to get ironed out and, and, you know, figure it out before we draft an ordinance in a minute. I don't want us just to have to amend something later. And the state statutes only allow fireworks to be sold at certain times. Even if we passed an ordinance tonight, we would miss the effective deadline and the next time they would be able to be sold would not be until July fourth or a little before July fourth. Um, so, just have those type of questions, um, you know. Want them limited to a certain zone. And also, we need to amend the zoning ordinance to make more permitted use within that zone. Um, it's a possibility to have a less conditional use where you could have additional, you know, conditions placed on these type of businesses. Um, I know Alderman Powell also mentioned having, um, a requirement that they have enough onsite parking, so there's not parking in the streets or along the sides of the roads. I think that was an issue at a previous time. Uh, so, just those, those type of considerations that we need so that we can make sure we have the ordinance correct the first time.
So, it sounds like to me, you know, we've got an ordinance now that prohibits the sale of fireworks. Correct. If we're gonna amend it and allow the sale of fireworks, well, then ordinance would need to say, "You're allowed to sell fireworks, and this is when," and the statute provides that. But if we want to put further restrictions and requirements about the type of facility for which they're sold, those types of things, that all needs to be spelled out in the ordinance. So, if we're going from you can't sell them to you can, then the question is, what terms do we want to place on those vendors in terms of how, when, where, why, permitting, various things of that nature? So, discussion?
Sure. I'll start us off, sorry. Um, so, I guess two truths can be right at the same time. Um, so, I was having this discussion the other day about, you know, the sale of fireworks versus the shooting of fireworks. You know, it's okay to allow to shoot fireworks, and also it's okay to not allow fireworks to be sold. You know, there's nothing wrong with that at all. Um, the courts have already said as a city, we don't have to allow fireworks to be sold if we don't want to. You know, so, um, I'll say, I guess, from our first incident with our ordinance to the second one we did, we come from one extreme to the other. Uh, I want to say Mr. Woods is not here, but, um, you know, he's asking why. And I think part of it, um, I can say, I was really hoping to use the computer tonight, had some questions for him on it, but, you know, he put a petition out to have signatures to allow fireworks in Buckstadt. Well, nothing has ever brought forth. He put forth a flyer with our phone numbers and email addresses for people to email us and to...
You're talking about members of the board?
Right. And the calls, including your name was on there too. And this is our previous board. This is our previous board. And so, I didn't get a single phone call.
Those nasty.
Writing emails, writing emails, and I spoke to the previous board, like Alderman Williams and Alderman Bates and Alderman Slay and Alderman Taylor. And at that time, none of them had received the messages or emails or anything either. You know, for people supporting the have fireworks sold in Buckstadt. Now, a lot of people, this is that monster at the bike shop, you know, and I liked it because as people came in, it was an opportunity for me just to talk to folks and get feedback and talk to them about what's going on. And everybody that I talked to about fireworks, a lot of folks were like, "Nah." But what they didn't like was the way that they set up this big tent right in front of our brand new development that had Elson Row and where Canvas went and everything. They didn't like how, um, we had our business on D's Drive. There's a tent set right there on the corner, and there's cars parked all up down D's Drive. And it's already about enough, you know, and that just added to it. You know, so, I think, you know, we probably went from one extreme to the other extreme. Now, I'm an entrepreneur businessman, I'm not trying to hold this line down, but, you know, if we are going to do something with fireworks, I definitely think we need to ask, we need to get it on there. And, you know, at that time, we're a young board. I didn't understand conditional use probably as long as I should have. Um, but, you know, six years later, here we are, and I definitely understand it quite well now. So, um, I would say if we are going to move forward with this, I would like to see fireworks definitely as conditional use. Um, you know, we spoke about possibly, you know, I guess, first about, I spoke to Zach about it, Mr. Giddy about it. Um, I would like to see a two-mile distance requirement between, you know, um, I have no issue necessarily with a tent. Um, so, like right now, Weizenberger Road, we're on, uh, right there by Seasons, we got the tent for the Christmas trees. It's off the road, there's ample parking right there. So, not necessarily an issue with something like that. Like I said, what I have an issue would be where it's right there on the corner and, you know, you're parking on the road. Um, you know, so, I would like to see, and there somehow, I'm not sure if I called a verbiage with the, where the parking would have to be, you know, not on the road, not an actual parking lot. Um, I have no objections for a tent necessarily, and it's only there for a short brief time. Um, let's see here, or is there other stuff? Maybe I left my paper, I've written everything.
I know you were discussing, you know, the possibility of maybe having it as a, you know, the requirement that they, if they do set up, but I'm assuming it would be if they set up a tent somewhere that they would already own a business inside the city.
Yeah, so, that was a discussion. It was, you know, if that was legal to do, number one, or if you could give preference to a local business owner that already has a business in Buckstadt. Because, I mean, the two-mile distance requirement is, I'm gonna kind of limit you a little bit. You know, I think currently we're C. two, if I remember correctly, so...
So, they have to be a property owner and business owner?
Well, I mean, that's up for discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, at least we haven't dove into that yet. Um, I had an initial hearing it, you know, probably not.
Right.
Probably run into some consternations.
You know, as far as having the big guy out there with the waving arms flapping around and these big spotlights, you know, going up and everything, I would not like to see that.
Yeah.
And just adjacent to neighborhoods, which I think, you know, in the past, they set up right there by Twin Cedars, um, that lot between the Sheraton and Twin Cedars. We've got a neighborhood, like literally you got a house, you got several houses that are right there backing up to it. You got people coming and selling fireworks in back yards, you got these big lights. So, anyway, that'd be another thing that I would like to make sure it's not around neighborhoods.
The hours of operation.
I think all that's done by...
Why couldn't you make them set up just like a regular business? I mean, make them have a hard stand business and make sell fireworks out of it like anybody else?
Let me ask this question. If the question was, we're gonna continue to outlaw the sale of fireworks versus we're gonna now allow the sale of fireworks, depending upon the details, is it the appetite of the board to allow the sale of fireworks, just as a general proposition, recognizing that details maybe make you change your mind? Or is some, or, or are there three of you that say, "I don't care what the requirements and the conditions are. I don't want you to be able to sell fireworks in the city." Because if there are three of you who feel that way, the discussion need not go further.
No, I'm for the sale.
I'm sorry?
I'm for the sale. I can't speak right now.
Sounds like one, two, Jace, three, four, so at least four. You don't have to speak up if you don't. Okay, so, it sounds like to me that there's a general appetite to allow the sale of fireworks, recognizing that the devil is always in the details.
Now, I also want to ask Assistant Slayton. Would, I never reached out to y'all before deciding. Did y'all have issues when we were selling fireworks as a DB as a whole?
No, not that I'm aware of at all.
Okay.
Would it be okay to say something like, "You can only sell fireworks where your business is?"
Correct.
Currently.
Well, I think you run into the issue there with, I think, for instance, like with the, where some people set up the tents, they would get a lease from the, from the property owner, you know, from the business owner there. So, then that lease gives them the rights of that business. So, then they technically would have the business there. So, you're basically limited from people being able to lease property, but then that restricts people being, you know, that would restrict them from, you know...
If we're gonna... Hey, we can put them right in front of Canvas again, but I'm gonna be a hard no. I'm gonna do everything that can to fight.
I'm gonna be a hard no on D's Drive.
On D's Drive, you know, I'm gonna be a hard no, but allow fireworks, that's what it pays.
Well, I was gonna say, if there was something where you could say where they could sell fireworks, or if it was a business person wanting to sell fireworks where their business is throughout the year, if this was just something they wanted to add to their inventory to sell.
Well, dictating where they're sold is really the point of the conditional use, right? So, I mean, if somebody came and said they wanted to sell in front of your business, then that's something that the board could say yea or nay about. That kind of would go, where are we gonna allow them as part of a conditional use? And the board as part of the conditional use, if it granted it, could dictate when they were gonna be sold at the time, under what facade or storefront would be required, right?
Right. And portable signs.
So, if you just make it a conditional use, then the board could dictate the particular conditions?
That is true. Um, I mean, I think if you, it sounds like there may not be an issue with the tents like it was, you know, like, you know...
For place property, like I said, don't stick it right in front of Canvas. Now, you don't stick it right in front of these buildings. And there's places that you can put one, it's off the road, that you still get all this shit you get without, you know, making it look horrible.
So, let me ask this question. If we, if we just amended the conditional use of the businesses that require conditional use, and we put fireworks sellers in that, when we got Neo Salons and whoever else, right? If we made fireworks stands, however you want to word it, part of that...
You still have to, we'd have to repeal the ordinance.
Right, we repeal this ordinance, amend the other ordinance to include fireworks sellers in the conditional uses that are required. They would have to apply for a conditional use. And the board could come here and impose whatever restrictions they wanted to as part of granting the conditional use, right?
Right, because I believe that's how it was previously before the 20, I think the first ordinance that was adopted regarding fireworks was in 2022 or 2021. I think previous to that, it was a conditional use. Um, because one of the, we did have litigation over that, uh, where, uh, I believe it was, uh, Robbie Covington and fireworks, uh, came for a conditional use and the conditional use was denied. He then appealed that and also appealed the, uh, adoption of the ordinance prohibiting sales. Um, which was, we raised that in the circuit court and ended up winning on that. Um, so I think prior to any, any ordinance being adopted, that was how it was previously.
So we could, we could then amend, I mean, repeal this ordinance, amend the other ordinance to include fireworks retailing and selling, however you want to say it, in the conditional use.
And then at that point, if you wanted any other type, you know, if it was a consideration that you wanted it to be a brick and mortar building, you could either input those specs in the zoning ordinance or just have it as conditional use as required as a particular work.
So if somebody then applied between now and July the 4th to sell fireworks in the city, they'd have to get a conditional use. You guys would pass on a particular requirements in order to grant the conditional use, hours of operation, parking, like we do for every other conditional use.
Mayor, I do think you probably need to designate the areas where the conditional use would apply. Uh, for instance, you probably don't want a, a tent to even be considered as a conditional use or fireworks to be considered as a conditional use along Kahoo Station Parkway. Uh, so, so you could treat it kind of like the food truck ordinance, where you have to comply with section 804, the zoning regulations for conditional use, like only in the, uh, commercial districts. And it'd be real similar to the way we treat that.
Mayor, since somebody's here from Fire Department and I have a little bit of experience there. Um, there are a couple of things to consider. One is the state law, you know, fireworks is pretty specific on what they require state law wise. And then we have the fire code, uh, that also is applicable, uh, in this. So there's going to be some limits on where they can sell them as far as just letting somebody that owns a business sell fireworks. Um, so, uh, I'm sure Zach can get with, uh, probably Dusty, uh, and get that information. Uh, because it, there are also pretty good restrictions there, like they don't let them sell them close to a gas station and, uh, that type of thing. So just, I want to mention that consideration when we start doing it. Okay.
Did you sign the public?
I did not, and I'm, 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 I have Robbie, with Robbie's fireworks.
Yes, sir.
Uh, some of all of this I can address with, with y'all, the permanent buildings and all that. Because I got, I have nice stores in the state of the city. And, uh, I run 40 locations, we run out of tents. And I, I understand y'all's concerns about having tents and I, you know, I'm over here with you on this side of the interstate, trying to keep them on the other side. I was in the process of building buildings and I got called up and all the, the getting it outlawed and, you know, I ended up having to sell my property in the hour and I head on and, uh, had, and now I hear y'all at least looking at doing it again. But, uh, but he's right, there, there are fixed state ordinances. I mean, they just changed the amount of sale time that you could do. It, that doesn't matter, it's only fireworks only going to sell on, on the 4th of July, three or four days in that, in that setting and three or four days in the setting at New Year's. All the other times, this setup time and prep time and, uh, and it's profitable, profitable for those times. But to, to build a store is a million dollar investment. I just built one this time last year in Natchez. And, uh, they're very safe and, and for the community, and they're going to buy them somewhere. They're going to go right across, go over into Canton and buy them or hopefully they come into my store 49 just outside of, uh, Jackson there, the backside of Madison, or should I say? So I, that's where I ended up building the store after y'all wouldn't let me build here. But it's, it's, it's an event, it's, it's a, we run a business, it's not fly by night people setting up and won't see them again. I've been in this business 53 years now. So I, I can help with, with any of this. Young Joe Dean is my lawyer and he couldn't make it tonight, but we want to do it right. We want to make, if y'all will allow us to come back to you and sell, we, we want to meet your, your standards and what you want. And hey, yes, I want a parking lot. I think more, if I got a big parking lot and people can park, I'm going to make more money. I don't want part of people parking down the south route. That's not, that's not business, you, that's shady, you know, don't get somebody hurt. And, uh, in fact, I just enlarged the parking lot in Port Haven, where I own the store how we had before, because if we get full, people couldn't get in the parking lot and everyone's somewhere else. So I added on to my parking lot. So, you know, this is, this is a big investment.
All right, thank you, sir. If, if, if the board repeals that ordinance outlawing fireworks, you going to run some more of those commercials? This time.
That wouldn't mean now.
This time talking good about these guys.
Yes, that was Mr. Woods.
That was Mr. Woods? That was Mr. Woods that ran that commercial?
I did not, I did not run it.
I need to make sure I asked Mr. Woods that next time.
It wasn't Woods, it was another fellow.
It was another guy?
Yeah, it was.
And I'm really joking.
I did, I wanted to, but I didn't.
I have a question. You say you have a brick and mortar, you sell fireworks.
I do.
Do you sell anything else?
No, just fireworks. And, and, uh, just to give you an idea, I don't believe y'all are going to go out to bands about women's prisons. The fireworks store sitting on the corner beside the outpost store, that's, that's what my design looks like and, and, um, the gentleman here in Gluckstadt designed that, um.
Hey, what?
Aor. Well, yeah, I don't know, I couldn't think of his name. But yes, we ne- we never got to that point the last time at all. The conditional use came up and nobody ever got past the conditional use that I know of.
All right, so, um, Mr. Giddy, what additional questions do you need answered from a policy perspective? To put something on that paper?
Well, I think if the board just wants to, to allow the sales, we can repeal the ordinance that prohibits the sales now. Um, I would like the board to look at the first ordinance that we did, um, that still allows for the sales, but also has some, some things in there, uh, like Mr. Minister spoke about regarding the, you know, has to be compliant with the national fire code and those sort of things. It just outlasts more details, um, about the activities and sales and that type of thing, um, then you can allow this conditional use.
Okay, so why don't we do this, with the passage of the present ordinance, did it negate the ordinance that we had existing? Was it part of repeating that ordinance? Okay, so what we need to do is put the original ordinance back before the board for the next meeting. Allow them to look at what's written on the paper to determine to what degree they want to make substantive changes to it. I think we ought to wait and repeal this ordinance at the time that we address that ordinance. Let's, let's not get rid of this one yet unless we have something. That's my two cents, I can do what you want.
Well, it won't affect you.
It's not going to affect anything until July anymore.
Is it, um, is it more efficient to have standalone ordinance versus just having a conditional use? Kind of like what we've done.
It, it would be standalone ordinance, you would just refer to section 807 of the zoning regulations for the conditional use requirements. And it would require a public hearing.
So like the, the, the previous ordinance, the first one before the one that prohibited the sales, it said that you have to have a conditional use, but then it also has some additional requirements, like for instance, temporary, temporarily erected structures can be no closer than 40 feet to the property line or the right of way. Things like that in there, if you want it to be further setbacks, you know, those type of things. That can be addressed in the standalone portion of the ordinance, but it also has to have a conditional use. So then you could have additional conditions on top of it.
If you want to have the, the distance requirements on there, should that be added in then, rather just?
If you want.
Because I'd rather be something that when somebody looks at it, that they know they're not coming before us and all of a sudden they find out, oh wait, they have two miles, you know, distance requirement. Uh, are they going to require me to have two miles? You know, I won't.
That could be.
Wherever we end up deciding on.
That could be the standalone ordinance, you know, the, those distance requirements, you know, any other kind of compliance type, type.
So why don't we do this, why don't we send to the board ASAP the original ordinance, just so they have it there? Please send whatever comments you have or suggested changes directly to Mr. Giddy. And, and you figure out how best to put that all together into a document. You know, we asked him to do that and he makes, he's forced to make policy decisions because if, if you tell him you want a two mile distance requirement, Mr. Williams says at 500 foot, he's torn as to which one to do. Uh, let's figure out the best way to consolidate that in one single document that we can consider in J. Porter. All right, Dan?
Can we set a deadline to get feedback too, so that, because we have an internal deadline that he has to be?
Yeah, can, can we set it to in the next two weeks?
Like by January 2nd, is that possible?
Get an all to them by January 2nd. That, that'll give us some way. And then of course, this man's got some good knowledge to help with that too. So let's put something together and then we can be more critical and more, um, constructive discussion next time. Anything else about the amendments to the fireworks ordinance? All right, Ms. Kellam, I use eight. Thank y'all. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Chris, everybody.
Mr. I'll be brief on my update. Uh, our audit went great, we're tying up a few purchasing tests and then we should have our FY25 audit done by February. Uh, we're working on end of the year right now, so 1099s, uh, W2s, all of that fun. And, um, I'm also working on doing some research for leave accruals. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of our attention that, that our leave accruals may be low compared to some other jurisdictions, municipalities and states. Uh, you know, with a tier five coming in and hers on March 1st, this may be a way to, uh, you know, make some, some changes or, or benefits for those that are going to be new hires. So I'm going to have more information for you at the January meeting related to the research I'm doing on leave accruals. Uh, we are also going to reapply for the traffic grant, uh, FY27 in January, as well as the JAG grant that's, uh, due next Monday. So, um, that's really kind of what we've been working on is reporting deadlines for grants. That's all I have on my update.
Any questions on Ms. Kellam? All right, I'll take this A, A, I'm assuming no questions on A. Oh, you don't have anything to add, do you, sir?
I'm sorry, I just thought of one thing, uh, going back to fireworks ordinance just briefly. The, if we're going to allow them as a conditional use in, in certain zones, we have to have a public hearing for that, right? Do we want the, do we want that to go before the planning and zoning commission first, the public hearing and then comes to the law? Or have public hearing before the board? It's just for publication deadlines.
Usually we let P and Z do the public hearings?
And then we could have the, the final ordinance adopted, so to speak, in February and that was still, they've done everything before July.
Go on to have the public hearing yourselves or you want to let P and Z do what they do?
Hello, I started talking with P and Z, he's like, we don't want to have it. And of course, taking all of this up here.
Keep in mind that their recommendation is advisory and.
Uh, we bypass them on other things, if you want to.
This, this is kind of unique, I, I think, since we've already been to court on it and all that. I mean, I think, I think this board is probably more familiar with what's going on and has a better background and understanding of it. That'd be my rate, don't they?
You just want to handle yourself? All right, I'll hurt P and Z's feelings.
Sorry, I just, we had to publish it. We have to go by certain dates on this. Okay, Ms. Kellam?
Uh, on the grants update, I've updated the grant spreadsheet, I really have nothing much to add to it other than, uh, we did, uh, complete our homeland reporting requirements that were due on Monday. Those of our, those reports have already been submitted on the three homeland grants that we have. Uh, the JAG, uh, reapplication, resubmission is due on Monday as well. We're working with Chief Slayden right now on, uh, some laptops and quotes, uh, to submit for the JAG grant for five laptops. So we'll be submitting that hopefully tomorrow. Maybe if, uh, we have everything we need from the police. Um, as far as, oh, I added, I did, I am adding a request for another America 250 grant for, this one is for the Arts Commission in the amount of $12,000, uh, to try to do some kind of public art display for the celebration of the America 250. Um, again, that's kind of a fluff grant, but I am requesting, uh, you know, your authorization to submit for it on the next item.
That's item 80.
Yes, so if y'all have.
Now, once you allow her to apply for that grant. And Mr. Bates made the motion, I will second it all in favor. Item 80 passed 5 to 0, we're at item 8D now.
Yes.
Approval of some quotes.
So Carrie Miniger has worked on the cybersecurity grant, uh, and has come up with all of our, uh, quotes that we need approved uh, to submit for, um, it's, we, we were required to get, uh, quotes for equipment as well as professional services. And we have three before you, and I believe the one that they selected was BCI. Uh, so I'm just requesting approval for y'all to approve the quote and we can go ahead and issue the purchase order.
And BCI quota 739271?
Yes, and that is for the equipment. And then in addition, I'm requesting that, uh, you guys grant us, uh, the 20 is going to be doing contractual work on that. And it's a professional service, so it does not require free quotes.
Okay, so you want them to approve the BCI quota 739271?
Yes, sir.
And you want them to approve the three items delineated at the bottom of your memo from the 20?
Yes, sir.
And those various dollar amounts?
Yes, and so they'll be doing the work on implementing all of this.
Okay. All right, questions at all about that, Mr. Williams?
The 20 is 86724.
Let's see, the 20 down at the bottom, there's three different, uh, let's see the total. Yeah, so all three of those items is, is in the, the contract for the, the services that they're going to be doing to implement or put in the, that.
Yeah, I, I basically just broke it out, um, so y'all could kind of see, uh, what they were. Um, the award is how much the grant is actually paid. Uh, and so the, the, uh, quote is what, what we will be paying them.
It's actually less.
And it, yeah, it's actually less. And then the, the UPS is we're actually getting them for less. So we're actually going to be ended up giving money back on the grant, uh, because we're, we're under on what we're, we're paying for.
There's no match, so they, they pay for this one.
Yeah, 100%, very much so. So we, we would pay the 20, Mr. Williams, 18210 plus 22680 plus 2100. And it would pay BCI 739271 and the amount of the grants awarded exceed all of that.
Yes, and once we issue the purchase order and we get the equipment and all of that, then we submit for reimbursement and then we can close out the grant.
All right.
I'm just requesting that.
A motion then to approve those quotes. That was Ms. Campbell, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, seconded it all in favor. Any opposed? Okay.
I think that's all I have, thank you.
All right, um, item nine, uh, planning and zoning update, monthly building permit log. Mr. McCullough.
So, uh, it wasn't a lot going on with the planning and zoning board, uh, last month, uh, because we just didn't have anything on the agenda. And so the, uh, the chairman, uh, uh, put out a notice that we would not have the meeting in November. Our next meeting is going to be December 23rd. Uh, and, uh, we do have two items on there. One's going to be a dimensional variance request on the side, uh, 264 County Station Parkway. Uh, and, uh, the other is going to be a conditional use, uh, permit hearing, uh, and, uh, recommendation uh, for a food truck at the Magnolia Pickle Mall. So that's two of those. Uh, we did issue, uh, 28 permits, uh, for a total, uh, revenue of $14,729. Uh, and, um, Citizens Bank was also permitted, so you should start seeing some work going on over there on County Parkway thing. And the architecture review standard for the city, uh, the board approved a, uh, an ordinance, uh, establishing the architecture review board. Uh, the 30 day period is up for that ordinance. Uh, I, I am setting up an organizational meeting with them. Uh, it'll be, uh, next week, I believe it's on the, uh, on the 17th. So, uh, we'll, we'll elect the chairman and set our meeting times and, um, uh, Zach, I may need to get you maybe to come to that part of the meeting, so. Um, let's see, also, we had a pretty good meeting about the standards themselves, we're developing those. Uh, we had a meeting with Chris Watson. about the standards themselves, we're developing those, uh, we had a meeting with Chris Watson, uh, and, uh, the city attorney was there, and, uh, one, one board member from the architecture review board was there as well, and so we sat and we discussed, you know, what, what the review standards should look like, and we already have a shell of an ordinance that we're kind of working with, and, uh, and Chris is actually, uh, Chris Watson is actually writing that, that portion of the, uh, the design standards for us, but, uh, we, we're going to have probably another three or four meetings before we're going to actually be able to nail it down on, uh, what we, what we think, uh, Gluckstadt should look like going forward, and so we're going to put some time and effort into this part of it, and, uh, uh, you know, we, 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 we're going to divide the city up into different architectural districts, and, you know, every area in Gluckstadt is not the same, um, we didn't, we didn't think it was reasonable to have, uh, make somebody, uh, build a palace in a sea of metal buildings, but at the same time, uh, where we have areas where we want to really focus in on, like a downtown type area, uh, those standards need to be of, uh, you know, a high caliber, it's going to be, it's going to be the German type, uh, of architecture that, uh, you know, we've always talked about, and we want to try to implement that. So, um, getting a lot of comments and getting a lot of, uh, input from a lot of folks, um, and I suggested to, to you, mayor, that maybe we need to maybe have work sessions with y'all at some point, you know, to sit down and just go to this, where, where we don't have the file, there were no meeting going on at the same time, uh, because this is important, and it is going to be, um, uh, quite significant, you know, as far as development goes. Uh, let's see here, we, uh, also recently hired our new building official, uh, I'm very impressed with that young man that we hired, uh, he's already passed his residential, uh, building code inspector exam, and he is al- already, uh, uh, studying for the commercial, uh, IDC, which is the, I think, the twenty twenty-four, uh, version of the building code, so he has hit the ground on it, uh, he's just amazed at how, how fast he's picking it up, so I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with him. Uh, and we also have, uh, uh, another candidate we're going to talk about tonight as far as the planning and zoning administration. Uh, other than that, that about takes care of the, uh, of the update, uh, I also have a copy in there for your information on the building permit log, uh, if y'all have any questions about that, maybe not.
Any questions on Mr. McCullough? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Buckner, item, item number ten eight.
Good evening, board. Uh, for y'all is a flat for Gluckstadt Office Park, I mean, I typed it wrong a little, I apologize, could be Gluckstadt Office Park, uh, if y'all remember, this is, uh, Sheriff Tucker's old house on Old Jackson Road, he got divided into three lots, and this is just a flat, uh, showing where the lots are going to be, uh, we will not be adding any new streets to the, to the city, it'll be a private street.
Any questions at all about an exposed final plaque of the Gluckstadt business park or office park? All right, is there a motion then for approval of the final plaque of the Gluckstadt Office Park?
Make the motion, sir.
Mr. Colley made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bates seconded, all in favor. Any opposed? All right, item ten B.
Uh, coworkers would like to start advertising for our, for a maintenance worker position, uh, we're looking to add a fourth person to the truck for the right-of-way cuttings. Uh, we had spoke about this previously in budget cuts, and during the winter, and us not having grass to cover, we were going to push it off until springtime, uh, we're looking to at least have to hire about February, try to get them in before the hirs change, just try to hope out one last time, uh, we're just looking for y'all to commission them to advertise.
There are motion then to authorize the advertising for the maintenance worker position. Is that Ms. Campbell?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Campbell made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor seconded, all in favor.
Right.
Any opposed? Otherwise, we're going to have to work the weed eater.
I don't weed either.
Thank you, sir.
Got a pair of tennis shoes, mate.
Yeah. All right, Chief Slavin?
General update, this is the first time in over five years that the PD has come to a board meeting and not wanted money. And they send you.
You haven't spoken yet, they send you. I'm glad I can be the second string for you. Uh, chief wanted me to let y'all know, uh, for the staffs on the PD, we had two hundred and sixty-seven citations, uh, total of ten misdemeanor arrests, seven felony arrests, uh, out of all those, six of them were DUI, uh, we worked twenty-eight accidents, and he particularly wanted me to address, uh, Thanksgiving morning, we ended up working for, uh, we had one vehicle that was stolen out of a neighborhood and two that were burglarized, uh, we were able to locate, uh, we believe all the suspects involved in that, so we were able to recover the vehicle, uh, we recovered one of the items out of a wallet that was stolen, and then we have four suspects in custody in relation to that. They're all getting charged with auto burglary, uh, two counts of that, auto theft, one count, and then the conspiracy for the, the whole felony. Uh, one of those individuals is also charged relating to assaulting one of our officers, uh, probably trying to get him transported to the jail, um, and then we took custody of them on behalf of, uh, Capitol PD after they were involved, you know, shooting them. So we expect at least two of them to have additional charges in terms of related to aggravated assault and all of them. Uh, currently, they are being held in Madison County and are no bonded by our judge, so they won't be going anywhere until soon.
Yeah, and then, you know, chief does such a good job of at least keeping me in the know on things, he thinks I ought to know about it, you know, I don't know about y'all, but on Thanksgiving morning, last thing I was worried about was chasing down a bunch of bad guys, stealing cars and shooting at the police, and that's what you guys did, and, uh, again, I'm so appreciative of what y'all, all, all of you do for the city, when the rest of us are eating turkey and, and, and enjoying ourselves, y'all don't get the time off, and so I want you to know how much I personally appreciate, and I know everybody here does.
And I was thinking what you said, because it was three doors down from my house, we got ring cameras and all my neighbors going, man, what's going on? I go, I'm going to make, make a phone call, and I guess it was, uh, Christie at dispatch, and she said, yeah, we are, we had burglaries, and, I mean, we had cops going, our PD going in and out and, you know, knocking on doors, we weren't there, but, uh, very good job, we appreciate it.
We definitely have an excellent group of guys, uh, from the ground up, uh, patrol investigation, dispatchers, all of this with information, uh, watching video and analyzing and all that, we definitely have the right group.
Did the license plate reader play any role in that?
Uh, they did.
Didn't?
Thank you. Any questions?
We definitely get our minds worked out, out of LPR, uh, uh, the businesses that do cooperate with having video cameras that support us when we're doing those things, like, uh, there was several commercial businesses that supported us in this, that everyone provided us with video and all that, you know, addition to the, people that like ring doorbells and stuff, yeah, but all that put together, we were able to build this case with.
I just want to say that, you know, chief asked me for some ring video from our house, and, um, you know, it almost cost me having resigned, committing an argument, and so my wife could quit teaching and try to get hired on to be a detective.
He's going to, he's going to put everybody to work.
Right. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, chief, appreciate you. All right, at this time, we need to enter into executive session, so is there a motion for us to enter into closed session first to determine the need for executive session?
Make the motion, sir.
Mr. Colley made the motion, Mr. Taylor seconded, all in favor. All right, we're in closed session.